I'd like to bring this meeting to order. The Village of Villa Park Board of Trustees Committee of the whole meeting, April 8th, 2024. Clerk Connecty, please call the roll.
Trustee Alfano.
Here.
Trustee Cordova.
Here.
Trustee Corkery.
Here.
Trustee Kozar.
Here.
Trustee Kumar. Trustee Patrick. Presley Kazo.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, tonight's discussion, our first one, is our quarterly financial update. Finance Director Chuck Howard will deliver a preliminary summary of the village finances for the period January 1st, 2024 to March 31st, 2024.
Thank you, President Kazo. And thank you all for, I know there's a lot of paper that you probably looked at in the quarterly report, but I'll try to summarize a few of the things in there. And first of all, overall, general fund cash is about $750,000 higher this year than the comparable period last year, about 4. or 5.46% increase in cash balances. Most of the cash balance is a matter of timing this time of year. And as I discussed, you'll see how revenues flow, especially in the first quarter. And those funds that you see in there that may have a negative cash balance are usually capital accounts that we true up as we go through our audit process. So you'll see those if, when we meet again, we should have those things all posted and you'll see that those things are zeroed out. The investment portfolio, that's something that I don't often get a chance to talk about. Rates of return that I see currently are about 4.5% in the money market accounts. Weighted average in our investment portfolio is about 5.24. The most recent purchases that we've made are about 4.87. So we kind of had that lip that where things were over 5%. Now, you know, they're kind of less than 5. And from what I see, 5 seems to be the number. And if we get into the renewals of those CDs that are maturing in 2024, I'd expect those to be a little bit lower than that bump we had where we were over 5%. For the quarter ended March, general fund revenues were down slightly, about 4/10% compared to the same quarter of 2023. Expenditures were about 3 or 6.3% below last year. And if you compare actuals to estimated, revenues are at about 20% of the estimated budget and expenditures, 14%. The expectation for the first quarter is always lower revenue because that's how property taxes flow through. We don't receive property taxes in the first quarter. We'll see those probably toward the end of the second. So, and expenditures are lower, and we would expect those again. Those are cyclical because we're getting into the capital project season. And so we'll see those things happening in the second and third quarters of this year. All tax revenue is about 20% of budget. Property tax, about 2/10% again. That's about the cyclical nature of property tax collection. Just some selected departmental financial data. Combined Parks and Rec revenue, year-to-date, is about 19%, higher than last year. Expenditures, 15%. We're getting to the point where we're starting to see those expenditures for our capital projects and parks. Capital-related funds compared to budget are about 6% for revenue and 7% for expense. The actual capital revenues compared year-to-year increased 5%. Expenditures for capital projects increased 500% again. You build a rec center, you're going to have probably some expenditures related to it. So we're going to see that here as we complete that. And if we were talking this a year from now, we'd be back along the normal course of things for expenditures in parks and rec. Village-wide revenues are 9% higher than last year. Expenditures, 16% higher. Again, we're doing some of the Parks and Rec things. Revenues minus expenditures for all funds were at $1,476,123 for the first quarter versus $1,876,895 for the first quarter of 2023. So again, indicating that village activity toward completion of the rec center is undergoing. And we'll, we'll see, of course, these big expenditures and the expenditures for our normal capital season affecting how expenditures look here in 2024.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions up from the board? Trustee Kozar.
In short, how are we doing on track with our budget? Like, I know you threw around just a bunch of numbers.
Sure.
Say we're on track with where we want to be at the end of the year on our budget?
We will be, yes. It's a tough time for comparisons again. Revenues don't trend with the budget because budget is kind of linear. But we will be on track. We always complete this. I'm not at all concerned that we're, we're going to miss a budget item. We budget conservatively according to revenues, so.
And we're still on the kind of the same trajectory as we would if we just compared the first quarter of last year versus the first quarter this year? They're both pretty similar?
They're very similar, again.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Everyone seems to be, we're on track, so that's a good thing.
Please.
Is there anything that you would recommend or that you would like to see for the second quarter that we're not already kind of headed that way? Do you have any concerns coming into the second quarter?
I do not. We certainly want to make sure that we, I know there are some things with grants and grant receivables that we want to make sure we track appropriately. We are looking for, you know, all the revenue from the OSLED grants and some other things that come through to make sure that those get posted and reflected properly. So it'll help kind of even out the revenue and expenditure needs.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Other questions? Looks like, oh, thanks, Chuck. Appreciate it.
Good.
Okay. Item B on our discussion menu is a commission handbook draft. Staff is presenting a draft handbook for commissioners in the Village of Villa Park. Assistant Village Manager Suzanne McVey surveyed similar guides from other villages along with requirements in our code and created this draft. Staff seeks guidance on how to proceed with the goal of having a final version for approval by the board in May. Go ahead. It's all yours. This is a request of the board, and we're trying to meet that. And here's the first draft for you guys to make comments upon. So go ahead, Suzanne.
Yeah, so we, taking feedback from the board and just kind of looking broadly at, you know, just HR principles as a whole, in order to create engagement, one of the most important things is appropriate onboarding. And so the idea was to create a handbook that kind of was inclusive of a lot of general information that may help commissioners in their role. Once we finalize the strategic plan, then we will update this handbook to also include the strategic plan. So it can help commissions kind of understand the overarching goals of the board and sort of set a trajectory for those commissions as well. But the idea was just to get something in place. It will also help serve as an informational guide for future commissioners or people who are interested in volunteering for our commissions and boards. So it provides a lot of general, general information about those positions as well. So I think generally, we were looking for some feedback, things that you would recommend and ways we can implement. One of the big things we look to do is kind of get this in place with our reappointments and then also ensure that all of our commissions undergo Open Meetings Act training. So to make sure we're in compliance effective, these reappointments will have everybody include our sitting commissioners undergo the Open Meetings Act training so that we have everybody taken care of. So that's kind of where we're at right now. So happy to take any feedback or answer any questions.
Quick, the, I know in here, we've got the, that when you're reappointed, you have to go through that. Is that our code now?
It's the Open Meetings Act law. So you're required with every reappointment, whether elected or reappointed, to undergo the Open Meetings Act training. So there's some question about how thoroughly we've tracked that. And so we're just going to have everybody do it again to make sure it's done. And then we'll do it with every reappointment or appointment moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any comments from the board on the draft? Trustee Alfano.
I do have a question. Did we reach out to the commission chairs to verify that the information underneath each commission is accurate?
So this was taken off what's on our website. So my goal was to kind of get feedback from the board. And then we will also share with department heads and commissioners to make any additional adjustments. We were kind of starting here first and then moving to that. But this is the information that we currently have available. There is some, you know, clarifying, trying to provide additional information about what commissions do, but some of it probably could use some updating. Yeah.
Other comments from the board? Trustee Kozar.
So are all our commissions, four-year commissions, are four-year cycles?
I believe most of them are three-year.
Are three-year? Okay.
Or, yeah, the liquor control commission is one year, and then I believe most of them are three years.
One exception is Parks and Rec, and that's two years.
It's two. Yeah.
And then all the reappointments that we have today in our other meeting are just the natural cycle of the three-year?
Yes.
So every time this year, every time in three years, we're going to have a block of commissioners?
It's actually annually because they are cycled so that you don't have an entire board leaving at once. So they're cycled based on the number of commissioners on each board. There are, I think, a couple appointments that are filling vacancies today. But every May, we will have a huge group of reappointments based on terms that are expiring. And I don't know if Manager Harline has anything to add.
Each, each commission's cycle is, was established and put in the, in the original code. Most of them, when they originally appointed, for example, if there was a seven-member commission, there'd be two appointed in one year, two appointed in two years, and three appointed in three years. And then they would, they were to keep that cycle so that you don't have, like, like, this is Village Manager McVey said, you don't have, all of a sudden, have to replace an entire commission because all seven were leaving at the same time. We've had a little, it's, it takes a little bit of good bookkeeping to make sure that you are, when somebody leaves in the middle of the term, that you're filling a term that is, you know, that you don't like give them an additional, assuming that they get three years from the time of appointment, you have to keep track of what that, that particular seat was, when it was supposed to expire, when you're filling an unexpired term. Other than that, you know, there, there are few exceptions, but the, most of them are three-year cycles.
Yeah, because I think the, the Sugar Creek, there's that one position that alternates with Elmhurst, so that's only a yearly, it's a one-year term. I guess that's about the only one that's unusual like that.
And actually, they, so the chair of the golf course is an, sort of an internal decision of the Sugar Creek golf. We put three or four members on the, on the board, and then one of them alternating years is the, is the chairman of that.
Okay. Thank you.
And some of those are actually staff.
Okay. Trustee Alfano.
I think that this is really comprehensive in the sense, especially the appendix. I really like that it, it kind of lays out what each member of the commission should expect and the Open Meetings Act and Robert's Rule of Order cheat sheet. The social media policy, I noticed, is from 2012. I don't know if we have any intention of looking at that and updating that because social media has changed a little bit since then. MySpace is kind of, and Flickr is notated in here. And I think that we've kind of grown as a society from some of those things. So I don't know if that's at some point something we might want to revisit. That's just one of my thoughts. And then if it's possible to put in a sample agenda, because I think that when people are putting the agenda together, sometimes people have never done that before. And so it might help. I know that some people are using the same kind of format that we do for our board meetings, and I think that's helpful.
Yes.
So if we could just add something like that that they could reference?
Certainly. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Trustee Kozar.
I like what you've done. I like it being the start of it. I think this should just be given to all the commissions for their review and their feedback. So as new meetings come, I mean, after this meeting, you could email all the commissioners and then get their feedback on it.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. This is a very, very great first draft. Trustee Cordova.
I agree. This, it's, it's nice. This is really nice. It's really good to have. Some of the, some of the commissions don't have a residency requirement. And I understand that, you know, the Salt Creek one, because it is a joint one, but for the other ones, is there a reason in particular why we don't have a residency requirement?
I think that's just an error. I, I believe they all have residency requirements. One, a few of them specifically state within one year, and I think I just meant to go back and remove them. But they do all have residency requirements, so I will correct that.
All right, cool. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I also believe that at some point, and President Kazo, you might be able to confirm this, is that there are also some requirements, or I shouldn't say requirements, but there's also some language that says that you don't necessarily have to be a resident, but you could do business in the place of Villa Park. Is that still applicable?
I can verify.
I don't, yeah, I don't remember that being in there, but, you know, we can look at that.
I'll verify because I think there may be one, like the economic development.
Yeah, that was the only one that, yeah, that would be.
I, I think, yeah, that's what I was going to say. We need to have an exception for certain commissions only. I mean, I don't think the fund commission needs to waive the residency requirement necessarily, but economic development, I could think that businesses might be a part of it. So it is a good idea possibly to allow for kind of business residency, I would call it, as a possibility, not, you know, just anyone, but have either a resident, been a resident or a business for a certain amount of time in Villa Park.
Okay. Yeah, I'll go back. And if it doesn't already say that, then I will certainly work with Manager Harline to bring that forward.
Trustee Kozar.
If we are going to consider that, I'd like to have an open conversation up here about that because I can see some pitfalls. I mean, we are Villa Park. We represent the people who live in Villa Park. I understand, you know, what the thoughts are behind letting businesses be part of a decision-making body like a commission. But I'm, I'm not convinced that's the right place to do that. They would still have influence coming in. I'm not necessarily saying it's good or bad. I would just like to maybe do a little bit of homework before that gets, you know, kind of allowed or put in by ordinance or whatever, that we can have some debate on that.
Was it part of the ordinance?
So the current, I'm sorry, if I could, I'm sorry, President Kazo. It is in Section 2-2803, which is the Economic Development Commission, that to be eligible to serve on the commission, persons shall be either qualified electors of the village who have resided therein for one year immediately preceding their appointment, or have a place of business within the corporate limits of the village, the membership, and then the appointment. And it doesn't, it doesn't really define what have a place of business within the corporate limits of the village means, but that, those are the, those are the requirements for that one. Most of the rest of them, I think, leave residency.
Yeah. And maybe that should just say own, I can say have a place, work there. Trustee Kumar.
Maybe we want to be a little stricter, maybe, on that place of business language, possibly. If there are pitfalls that could happen, as discussed, we can discuss those. But I think maybe a little stronger in terms of the duration of the business or something of that sort may be a possibility also to just kind of address some of the pitfalls. But I'm, I'm not sure exactly what pitfalls are you considering, Trustee Kozar.
Trustee, go ahead. Trustee Kozar.
Sure. Well, I think place of business doesn't necessarily mean that you're the owner of a property in Villa Park. And like, we've got, we've got some businesses. We've got a business, for example, that's on Roosevelt, I think, and they just sell cars on the internet. They have a place of business in Villa Park. I don't know. I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not singling out that person or not, but I just, I don't know. There's something that just kind of makes me have some hesitation to bring people in who are not members of our actual residents in, in those committees or in decision-making places because they don't necessarily have the same interest as our residents do. So again, I mean, I'm not saying it's good or bad, but I, I don't know. I think I would like some more time to kind of vet that, that concept and who, who we're allowing on those. As of right now, I think it's kind of moot because I don't believe there's anybody on that commission that isn't a resident, and I can't remember there being one. The first time I ever heard it brought up, Trustee Patrick brought it up, and that was kind of news to me that that could even happen. I went back and looked at it, and I, I saw that. So, yeah, I'm, there's, I'm somewhere in the middle on it, and I just haven't decided. And I don't know that we're deciding anything today, but that's, you know, kind of my thoughts on it.
Okay. Trustee Patrick.
Thank you. I agree with Trustee Kozar on this. And one of the reasons why is because of, this goes even beyond my six years on the board here, is that a lot of the, the issues that the village presidents had was finding enough qualified candidates to fill these positions and these roles on, on, on boards. So I believe that language was added to those ordinances to help the village president find people to fill these roles as well. Looking at the document that you've created, the draft, I think this is exactly kind of the thing that we were looking for. This sort of thing is going to enlighten our residents, make them more aware. And I know for a fact that there are plenty of residents out there that would like to volunteer for these commissions and these roles. They simply have just not had any guidance on how to do so or what it was about. So in, going back to what Trustee Kozar said, I believe that if you are willing to be appointed to a commission, that you should be a Villa Park resident here. I also think that there are some issues that could pop up if you are just strictly a business owner and whether or not your intentions are for the entire community as a whole. I don't think it's hard for us now, or as hard as it has been in the past, for us to find willing members of our, willing residents that would like to step into these roles, especially with what you're presenting tonight. I think the path that we have forward and with the board all agreeing that our commissions do play a vital role in this and that we agree that this is something that needs to happen, is what's going to help us be able to fill these roles and make it a little bit easier on the village president. So I, too, would like a little bit more time to reflect on this, but I believe that's where that wording came from.
Yeah. And one thing, though, you know, I understand Trustee Kozar's, you know, certainly, like, you know, say this business, it's strictly just a online business. But the application comes to the board anyway, you know, for approval. And if it's something that, you know, if we leave that language in there, the board could always, you know, vote against it if, you know, they feel that it's not a, a right fit for, for the commission. So I mean, that's something else to think about, too. Trustee Kumar.
Yeah, I'm kind of have a different take a little bit on this for multiple reasons. Anyway, the commission, in my opinion, is an advisory board. So maybe there are certain skills or certain aspects of businesses that we may not, especially for EDC, and there are problems that we may not really be able to address unless, you know, they're kind of more vested. And I, I don't think that from an advisory perspective, they're making decisions necessarily. They are merely giving us information. And it is true that commissions could sway certain amount of information if they have all people who come from businesses. But so far, we don't see a real large number of people who are business owners who are not residents as a part of at least economic, the Economic Development Commission. So I feel like leaving that in there is not really in any way detrimental to us. It's just they are giving some information. There may be a business that brings to our table something that we need to address, that the commission gives them an easier way to access us than rather than just come into the board. So, and for that reason, I, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of that. And not only to fill the seats for the commissions, I think we're doing a lot, Trustee Patrick, in order to kind of fill the seats. It looks good for us. Look at the number that's on our agenda today. New people are coming in. I do feel most of our residents are feeling vested, and I think we're doing a good job in getting to them. And a lot of times, it's reach out that gets people on these commissions because it is a free service. Business owners in general do not have the time to attend or be in many of these things. So, so I'm not against taking, I'm not, you know, I do understand that there is this fear, but I, I'm not so fearful that, you know, the, the business owners and agenda is going to take over a commission necessarily. It's, it's a commission after all. And I'm not saying all commissions. I'm only thinking from economic development because that is the commission dealing with businesses. And, and, and I wouldn't obviously want a business owner deciding which park goes where because that may be more self-centric in their decision. So that's my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Kozar.
To your point, Deepa, or Trustee Kumar, we're only, that exception only applies to economic development. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then you still have to have the requirement? Is it?
There's, I was just looking through, and there are actually a couple of others where you can have, there'd be a, have a place of business. It's in, I think, video production and the fund commission, actually. So, and just while I have the floor, real quick, if you don't mind. So the, we're happy to look at that. Thank you for all the comments, and please feel free to send more edits by email for anything from, you know, the concept to a typographical error. But the changes that you're talking about here in the membership is, would have, require change in the code because that's, that is, that is actually written into the village code. So that would have to take an ordinance, and we'd have to change it. I'm not saying that you shouldn't change it. I'm just saying, or maybe the other thing you can do is specify that up to one can be somebody who owns a business but is, but is, has, is not a resident. You know, you can do a bunch of different things. You ultimately have control over who you put on your commissions. But, yeah, those things and, and the idea of putting other junior commissioners, which has been come up, that has to go through, that has to be an ordinance. So happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Kozar.
Okay. So we've got video commission, the fund commission, and economic development. Because of any of those, economic development would be the one place that I think it would be suited for. And does that business still need that one-year requirement like residents do?
I think they should. I mean.
Okay. I don't think it's, I don't, it's written there.
It's not in, it wouldn't say in there.
Because that minimum, I think it would, you know, if you have to live here for a year, you would have to have a business for a year.
Yeah.
And I think what you're saying, Manager Harline, is we're getting a little off track because we're supposed to be talking about the, the rules and regs versus ordinance, but
it's all good. It's, it's related.
Committee of the whole is more just kind of an informal conversation, so we can kind of take that anywhere.
Absolutely. Happy to.
Yeah. Okay. Trustee Kumar.
I, I have to say, I'm pretty happy with I, I have to say, I'm pretty happy with the rules and regs. I think these are little things that came out from actually having a process and, and, and kind of fixing the process so people understand, are vested, and get involved in our committees. And so I'm very happy that this is happening. I think you've done a great job, Susan, in starting it, getting it out there. And I think it'll be super helpful for commissioners, board members, all of them, because it's kind of a nice consolidated packet. So I have to say that. But at the same time, I think if we need to address some of these other issues that come out of this through an ordinance, I think it should come back to us, or we should put it on an agenda moving forth and decide upon what we want as our requirements for commissioners on, on the board and specifically. And, I mean, that can, that way be changed by an ordinance when it is necessary. So.
Okay. Thank you. Trusty Alfano.
Thank you. I want to bring this back to our document in front of us today. On page 10, the rules and responsibilities of a commission member. In the second paragraph underneath that, it mentions that commissioners may, on occasion, be approached by residents or other parties, even the media, to speak on behalf of the village. And it does sound like it gives the commissioners permission to speak to the media. But when I was looking at other ordinances and codes, the village manager speaks for the village. So I think it really needs to be very clear that, like, no, the village manager speaks for the village, instead of, it, it sounds kind of in a gray area here, the way that it's worded.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely clarify that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Or Assistant Manager McVeigh? Okay. Thank you. Again, very well done on the first draft there. Thank you. Appreciate all your hard work. Okay. So that, we have an opening for, oh, Trusty Kozar.
Where are we at with our, the trustee handbook? That's been back and forth. When will we see another draft of that coming?
You mean the, are you talking about the, the code of, sort of the?
We kind of made a policy.
Yeah.
And we talked about it a bit.
My goal is to have it for the next meeting.
Okay. Great.
Okay.
And I'm going to steal her shortcut to the, I was, I was looking for one of those shortcuts to the Robert's Rules of Order, so I'm going to definitely steal that.
Good. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to item four, public comments. Please come forward and give your name and sign in, please.
My name is Christine Murphy. And first and foremost, I'd like to thank Suzanne and her staff for the work on that document. I think it's going to be wonderful guidance and direction for our commissions. So I certainly appreciate that. And I will bounce off of Trusty Kozar's comment. My next request would be a question, do we have a similar document for the trustees? And if not, can we encourage the board to make a trustee handbook very similar with the goals, objectives for the trustees and the board? Thank you.
Manager Harline, you want to know?
I, I'm happy to continue with the, the, sort of the code of whatever the, the rules of order. And, and we can put some other information together that we did in the last time for a packet for newly elected. I hesitate to tell commissioners, you know, I would try and help with, with guidance on certain things that are the law and that sort of thing. But we, we can put that together. And, and definitely by the next, my goal was to have a much more robust one by the next election for the new, if we have new, newly elected officials that have guidance from the IML and some others on, on the, the role of the, being a trustee. But, yeah.
Okay.
We can, we will, we'll definitely have the rules of order and procedure for the next meeting. And then, and then we can, if there's more stuff that you guys would like from there. There's a lot of stuff that the IML puts together on, on being a trustee, which is a little bit different than being a commissioner, because you have a lot more authority and a lot more responsibility. But we can, we can, we can continue to work on that, too.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Any other public comments? Okay. Saying none, could I have a motion to adjourn? Trusty Cordova, you have a second?
I'll second.
Trusty Alfano? Okay. Kurt Krenke, will call?
Okay. Trusty Kumar?
Yes.
Trusty Patrick?
Yes.
Trusty Corkery?
Yes.
Trusty Cordova?
Yes.
Trusty Alfano?
Yes.
Trusty Kozar?
Yes.
President Kazan?
Yes. Okay. So we will adjourn, and we will start our regular meeting at seven o'clock tonight. Thank you.